Thanks for being here this evening. It's a beautiful day, and if we play our cards right, we might be able to have some day to enjoy when this is over. So, let's just get right into this. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. And, Dr. Rollins, is there anything we need to do as far as the agenda goes?
Just for efficiency, I'd like to just make a slight change in the existing agenda. If you would look at items B and C on this first page, you can see an opportunity for comments around our TV production. I'd like to just move what is currently item 2C under B1.
Okay.
So, we don't have people up and down, so on and so forth.
Anything else?
Other than that, the agenda is presented.
All right. Board?
I'll make a motion. We accept the agenda as amended.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to make that change in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We've all had the minutes of last month's meeting for a few days to look at. Is there anything that needs to be changed on those?
I'll move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. This is the time of the meeting that we would encourage any of our patrons that might be here. Are there any patrons here tonight? Is this all staff? Looks like everybody is on the payroll tonight, so...
We've got Meredith back there. She's...
Meredith, do you have any comments for us? Okay. All right. Then we'll just skip right past that one then. All right. Oh, wait a minute. I need to... It's time to do the... Where's the pledge? There we go. Do the pledge. That's what we're having now. We're gonna do the pledge. We don't have a student rep, so I'm gonna lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'm gonna pass this off to Dr. Rollins, and he's gonna run with it.
Board, we're very pleased to continue to have wonderful announcements to make in terms of progress in the district. I am so very proud of what continues to happen with our TV production program. Dr. Smith, if you'd come forward and begin your remarks with that recognition, that would be great.
If Mr. Jones is here, if we could come forward as well. So, as you guys know, we have a large district, 23,000 students. We have 1,700 staff members, 31 schools. We do graduations in almost every schools. We have performances from band, choir. It's huge, and we have two people that do a phenomenal job capturing that and helping us spread the word. And one of those is Mr. Jones, and we wanted to really just acknowledge his hard work. Last year, if you'll remember, during our board meetings, we also had sessions where we highlighted a different thing every single meeting. And that... The steps to create those are long and hard and involve a lot of people. And Mr. Jones and his team were remarkable to work with. They were able to get into the rooms, get ahold of the people, get just what we were trying to capture. And then the hours that it takes, he invited me in quite a few times to... I'm not gonna say help with editing. I'm gonna say learn with editing, 'cause it was a learning experience, and how to just make a two-minute video of how difficult those things are. And so, they did it amazing, and they did it nonstop all year long. So, we wanted to just acknowledge all of his hard work for that. So, if you could help me. And I know Seth was also a big part helping that team, so I know you'll acknowledge that. Wait, we're not done. So, the other thing we wanted to acknowledge is that he's got some great things getting ready to happen. And so, I'm gonna have him share a little bit about the 41st Mid-American Emmys that's taking place September 9th in St. Louis, Missouri, and I wanted him to have an opportunity to share that with you.
Thank you. Thank you, Board, Dr. Rollins. It is with great honor and humility that I get to stand here in front of you, and I thank you for your guidance and leadership over the years. This will be beginning our sixth year with the Communications Office having the media piece as part of it. I wanted to share with you some of the accomplishments that we had last year as we begin to look forward. As she mentioned, we were very privileged to win 14 Student Pillars of Excellence from the Mid-America Chapter of the Emmys. There's only 18 categories, so that's pretty exciting, and that is representing Harbor TV, Springdale High School TV, and Springdale District Television. 14 Emmys, which is very humbling. That'll be September 9th at the Chase Park in St. Louis, Missouri. What's really cool about that, we'll give you some photos and that kind of stuff, they actually walk down a real red carpet. So, what's cool about the Emmys is it wasn't built for education, as some of these are. Education's a component of it. So, it's really a professional Emmy setting where they celebrate industry leaders, and we are just part of it. So, that's really a cool thing for us to be a part of the industry. I'm gonna fill out for a second just a couple of numbers from last year. Our teams have over 19 active playlists in the Springdale School District. I think that is unreal, the way that we've expanded within five years. We had 1,000 videos uploaded to the Springdale Schools YouTube channel last year. 1,000. We're approaching 2 million views. As she mentioned, we produced 40 videos for the school board focus sessions last year, which was really exciting. We produced 40 videos of Dr. Rollins last year. That was great, getting to have his message directly going right out. Forty of those. Our three programs that compete, which is District Bulldog TV and Harbor TV, combined to win 151 total awards in the nation, region, and the state. And finally, we produced over 230 live events last year. I think there's only 190 days worth of school, so we were doubling up on a few of those. I'd like to take a moment just to thank our team. Rick Schaefer, Director of Communications, Jackson Braswell, Seth Biasso, Rochelle Moore, Bulldog TV, Travis Sherman at Harbor TV, Dana Wright at Central Junior High, and Van Stueman at Lakeside. Those are the people that combined together to really produce some great storytelling. And as you know, we have a lot of great stories to tell. So, thank you to the administration and to the school board for all the support. Thank you.
Great job, Trent.
Thank you.
Really, really great.
So, he's that full of energy when you're working with 24/7, too, so that's quite exciting. The next item is 2B, and I'd like to recognize an outstanding teacher in Springdale. He works at Harbor High School, and that's Mr. Travis. If you would please come forward. So, I'm sure most of you have heard of him or heard of his accomplishments, but he's recently been recognized for the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science, and this is the highest recognition that kindergarten through 12th grade mathematics or science teachers may receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. And there's about 108 teachers that are recognized each year. The Presidential awardees will receive a certificate signed by the President of the United States, a trip to Washington to attend a series of recognition events and professional development opportunities. And then the person that goes on to win will also receive $10,000 worth of money from the National Science Foundation. They also get to join an active network of outstanding educators from throughout the nation, and this has been going on since 1983, and they've had about 4,000 people that have been recognized. This is huge. This is a substantial award, and he's being recognized as seven-state finalist, and he will be going to Little Rock in November to get recognition for this. The process takes more than a few weeks, maybe a few years to get the final person's name, so we know that, but we're very, very proud of him. Well, I did not fill out the application. Somebody else did fill out the application. I can tell you that we haven't really addressed AP this year, but he has some of the highest AP scores. His score is about 10% over the global average for AP scores, and he teaches those AP Calculus classes. In addition to that, he has just taken on the role of department chair, and then a different role that he's just taken on is daddy. So, he is now the father of a three-week-old baby. So, I'm gonna give him the mic and just let him address anything, Board.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. It's very humbling and validating to, you know, get nominated and just feel that your work is being appreciated and recognized. I just learned, you know, luckily early enough that my passions for teaching and my gifts kind of collided. I don't think a lot of people find out as young as they do, as young as I did, that that was a good fit, so I feel like very blessed to find that out early and get to practice that and start to become an expert for Dr. Brackett and for all of the administration that's put the district in a position that I can, you know, teach the kids I do and do what I love is just really rewarding, and so I just appreciate it. So, I love what I do, and, you know, if you love what you do, you never work a day in your life, right? So, if you have any questions, I don't know a ton about the process, but happy to answer any questions you have.
Well, congratulations on the honor. Congratulations on being a father. That's even a bigger deal.
It is, yeah.
Good luck with all that.
Yeah. Turns out it's a lot harder than I thought. Teaching is easy.
It's gonna be a little harder to come by.
Well, it just begun.
What does your classroom look like? What do you attribute this award to, or the difference that you're making in your classroom? What is that?
Yeah, I try to reflect on that a little bit, and as I thought about it, there's probably two things that I really try to emphasize or that help me connect well with students. And, you know, from the simple thing, I try to become a content expert, to really know my material at depth, especially for the advanced students that they want it, they're eager to learn it, and they appreciate to understand, you know, why much more than how. And I think that gives them a little bit more respect and willingness to engage in the material if they think that I'm an expert and willing to think high enough of them to explain deeper understanding. But then, I think, for the most part, they know that I care about them a lot, and, you know, I just want them to succeed, and so they know that I'll do whatever I can to help them succeed, and I think they respond pretty well because of that.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you, Travis.
Yeah. Well, thank you so much for having me and for this recognition, and look forward to another great year.
Look forward to seeing you up here again.
All right. Thank you so much.
Last month also, we were recognizing some students that he had a big impact on. Sojus was one of them, and he was not able to be here, but a lot of kudos for his work there, because he spent a lot of time with, let's see, it was... Who were your two students that we had? We recognized?
Sojus, yeah, but, I mean, you know, you don't really need to do anything.
You just point him in the right direction, and he goes crazy, yeah.
I get blessed to work with the best of the best. A lot of your kiddos along the way, so I appreciate it for sending me the good ones. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Dr. Smith, let me visit with you just a second.
Yes, sir.
Could I make one adjustment? In my review of the agenda, I would like to amend the agenda. I know that's a little out of order. Is that okay with you?
You bet.
I'd like to add an item 3 under B now, and we're prepared to make this announcement today. I know the academic coach position is of major interest to all of us, and we've had a great introductory year, and we know we've had a change in personnel there. Dr. Smith has been leading the review efforts to identify a really outstanding individual to be the new academic coach for the district, and I think you will be elated when you hear the recommendation this evening. So, if we could under B announce the district's new academic coach that we have just employed, and we're pretty excited about that for sure. Thank you, Dr. Smith, for your leadership.
So, the process is not easy. We have very high expectations for this position. As you know, it's a very prestigious position, and it holds a lot of different things that we do in our district. So, at this time, if I could have Mr. Potenopoulos come forward. So, I know, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, we did our final interviews yesterday, just so happened to be right before the board, and so we were trying to get him in front of you. So, he found out this morning about 7:30. I went over to Dr. Brackett, and we made that phone call together to welcome him to the new position as academic coach. So, he's like, "Okay, so I'm not going to Harbor. I'm going down..." Yes, you're welcome. So, he is learning a lot today and getting to know all the different buildings and all the different things that he will be doing, but he's gonna be a great asset. He's got a lot of background knowledge in the AP and what we need to do to push AP forward, and what are some things that we can do in all different areas of AP, so I'm looking forward to that. And so, at this time, I'd like to recognize him as being the academic coach for Springdale.
Thank you, Dr. Rollins. Thank you, school board. Hello, Ms. Newman. And I don't think you looked hard enough, because there's a lot of more qualified people out there. I'm just humbled to be your servant and to serve this school district further and to kind of exercise a passion of mine, which is, I don't think a student in the Springdale School District needs to leave Springdale to maximize their K through 12 academic experience. I think it can be done here in this city and in these walls, and I think that's kind of what I've been charged to do, promote those kids, find those kids, and get those kids where they need to be. And if I can have any kind of touch on that, then I'll feel awesome. That's exactly what we're here to do. So, thank you for your support in the past, and thank you for your support in the future. Thank you. Did you have any questions for me?
Board?
Well, I think you'll do a great job. You said there were other people that you thought may have been more important. And I don't know who all was in that list, but, you know, just from our personal experience as a family, I know to be able to multiply that across these 23,000 kids we have, it'll be great. I'm glad you're gonna be able to do it.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate that.
I'm definitely looking forward to it. I told you earlier when I saw you that I'm excited about it. I've known you for a long time. My wife has known you for even longer than that, speaks really highly of you. And Dr. Rollins and I spoke, talked about it this morning in our meeting, and he reminded me of Veterans Day Assembly at Southwest last year, and I got the list of that, and I was quite impressed by your story.
Thank you.
So, if that's any indication of how things are gonna go, I've got high expectations for you.
Thank you, Randy. I appreciate that.
You betcha. All right. Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mike.
I would like to invite Dr. Slocum to come forward. Board, you can see the items that Megan will be sharing with us, but we're very interested in continuing to elevate science instruction, the science experience for all of our kids. And I know part of the acknowledgement this evening is to recognize Jake Beers, who's leading that ministry in our district, so...
Definitely. So, Mr. Beers, if you will come up and join me. We have had some serious fun in the world of science. We've gotten new standards. We've gotten everything reorganized, and those conversations are still going on as we speak. And so, we've tried to be nimble and make changes as those times have come, and one of the people who've helped us do that in science across our district and certainly with our elementary staff is Mr. Jake Beers, and he is phenomenal. The only thing I told him at the end of the year is I pointed to him in his face and said, "Do not leave." Like, I just, "Do not leave." Like, we've got so much work to do. Don't leave. Just stay right where you are. So, he has like a small ball and chain that we attach as he pretends to go out outside. But he had this amazing idea. We have something that we haven't had in a really long time happen, and something that we'll have happen in an upcoming seven years, and then we won't have it again for 99 years, which is a solar eclipse. So, he's gonna give you a little mini lesson. He's got a presentation for you, and we're gonna talk about what this is gonna look like across the district. This is his brainchild and his baby, so I wanna make sure you know how smart he is so that you will point at him when he finishes and say, "Don't leave." So, Mr. Beers, I'll turn it over to you.
That's quite the introduction. I don't know if I'll live up to that. But we're excited for this big event. You've probably seen the news. It's all over. And so, we, back in April, we began this process of thinking about how can we really tap into this solar eclipse as a catalyst for teaching and engaging kids in our science this year. And so, Larry Cooper teaches astronomy at SHS, and I, Leslie Pittman, who's in my cohort in secondary science, met with him, and we reached out and began to think about how can we make this work? And so, we looked at solar glasses and launched on this path of trying to find a vendor for solar glasses. And we'll talk about that in just a minute, but first, we gotta do some science. So, this is a probe that we use with kids, so I'll briefly read it to you, and you gotta make a choice. So, during a solar eclipse, the moon appears to completely cover the sun. What phase is the moon in just before and after a solar eclipse? So, you gotta do some thinking about your solar science. And when we do this with kids, we don't tell them the answer, right? We let them then engage and explore. So, we use things like lamps and Styrofoam balls, and we begin to create models. And so, with kids, we begin to come up with the idea of where does the moon have to be in order for it to be an eclipse? Does anyone know where the moon has to be? What phase? I'm gonna take a guess. So, in a full moon, if this sun's here, the moon's gonna be over here. So, if my head is the earth, so it can't be over here at full. It's gotta come all the way back around, and it's gotta block the sun, and so it's gotta be in a new moon. Yeah, so new moon. Hey, hey, you got it. So, when we do this with kids, we really try and engage this big idea of how can we engage them in solar science, and how can we engage them through modeling, not just giving them the answer, letting them explore. And as you heard earlier, we have this big solar eclipse coming, so it gives us a chance to have our kids out and explore. So, to do that, we have a district plan for the solar eclipse. So, we reached out to Explore Scientific. I don't know if you guys know Explore Scientific, the local Springdale company. They had donated some telescopes in the past to the school district, and, you know, they sell these solar eclipse glasses for $2.50 for two pairs, which, you know, is obviously way out of reach for our district. So, they ended up offering us $0.25 a pair for these solar eclipse glasses, and so we jumped on that opportunity. It's actually below their cost, so they're actually losing money on this deal for them. We bought 25,000 pairs of solar eclipse glasses. So, that means that every student in our district, every certified teacher will have the chance to go out and explore this solar phenomenon. So, I brought some for you guys, so I'm gonna make sure you guys don't miss out on the solar eclipse. So, each of you guys have got your solar viewers. Now, you don't have to wear these all day, 'cause you actually can't see anything when you put these on, but every one of our kids will get these. They'll go out next week, and these will be... It's an opportunity for kids to really launch into science exploration with their teachers. So, different buildings have different plans. It's gonna look different across the district. Some, it may be a field day at one building. It may just be an activity class by class. We wanted really the chance for all kids to get out and explore. So, it's our 25,000 pairs. So, the best time to view it, so the solar eclipse begins at 11:43, and it will go until about 2:41 in the afternoon, so about three hours for the moon to start on one side, go all the way across the sun, and out the other side. So, peak viewing time is at 1:12 is when we'll get maximum coverage. So, I know you're right, and notice when you step outside your office door, that's the best time to view it, but it's kind of cool to watch it in all the different states. So, I'd recommend going out incrementally and seeing it over time. Another cool way to look is to look at any shadow. I think I got a picture of that next. So, any shadow, if you see that little crescent, any shadow that's cast by tree leaves or anything will be in actually the shape of what, of how the moon is covering the earth. So, you'll see crescent shadows all over, tree leaves, or hand, anything that makes a shadow, we'll see that event. So, to prepare our teachers to do that, there's a whole set of curriculum guidelines and resources that are available on our Springdale website. So, there's lesson plans, there's read alouds, there's teacher background videos and articles, everything that teachers need to kind of prepare to teach this event with their kids. And again, things like pinhole cameras or other things are things that teachers will be creating. That's kind of what you'll see. This is from 2016, but you'll see it, you know, kind of slowly over time, you'll slowly cover, and then that leads us to just this idea that this event becomes a catalyst for this year, and really launches our kids into science exploration. I know we have one section of astronomy right now at Springdale High School, and the goal will be that, you know, we hook a few more kids in, and we begin them on this track of wondering about space, of wondering about science, and getting involved in our STEM careers. And so, this is just, again, one more piece of that puzzle that we've built, and hopefully we can continue to advance our kids' thinking in science. Any questions?
That's good.
All right. We'll get out and explore the solar eclipse. We're excited for it, and, yeah, thanks, we'll be here.
Yeah. Can I ask you something? I heard on television this morning that even if you're wearing these glasses, you really shouldn't be using a camera with these.
Yeah, so...
Using your iPhone to take pictures, or do you...
Yeah, I don't know about much about cam... Like, you don't wanna look through a viewfinder of a camera, like an actual camera, and like binoculars, other things are obviously super dangerous. I don't know exactly about looking through an iPhone to take a picture. It would be something that we need to look to. We'll have like a safety guideline that we'll go up to teachers in addition to materials and make sure that teachers and students both are aware of the safety needs needed.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Were you the one that put all the different items on the website?
On the curriculum set together?
For elementary?
Yeah, for elementary. So, yeah, my job is to do everything elementary curriculum. So, you can see these are pictures behind us. We have kids involved in STEM activities, our mobile learning program for like Fayetteville Science Center, whatever else it be. Anything in elementary science is kind of in my wheelhouse, so...
I guess you don't know yet, but a kid in first grade, can they really conceptualize this yet, or...
You know, that's a good question. I think a lot of it comes back to really allowing kids opportunities to explore what's going with models and talking a lot about models already. First grade actually has solar science in their standards. They're looking for patterns, though, so like the phases of the moon, or their sunning, the sunrise and sunset. And so, you know, we begin the introduction there. So, I don't know about first grade, but even at a pre-k, we're having kids at least engage in this opportunity to explore this phenomenon and hopefully launch them into a lifetime of questioning about the space and science in general, so... Awesome. Hey, thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's great, and he's great at thinking about things that can help us. As you know, we're a race to the top recipient, and we are still using those funds, a ways for us to interwork science into some of our projects, and so he's done a really phenomenal job.
Is that lamp approved, Dr. Cleveland?
It is only for the use of...
Okay.
As long as it's unplugged, yes.
Yes. We're not gonna go back to Lampgate. So, as you know, we've already looked at item number two. We're gonna talk about item number three, which is, we host an Innovation Institute each summer. This was our big year, our biggest year yet in the Innovation Institute that we had in June. That is put on by our technology TOSSAs, and they do a phenomenal job in partnership with E-MENTS. And I know you have some comments and some things to review there, but I can just, I can't tell you the number of people who have reached out and said how much they appreciate that. It's open to Springdale teachers. It costs them nothing to attend, and it is all levelized and tiered for what their needs are in terms of where they may be on that excellent scale in terms of preparation to go into a new event or a new class. And so, they can self-select what is most comfortable for them in terms of that learning curve, which is really great. We also have tons of people from outside our district and outside our state who also attend. We had around 700 participants in this event, and it was huge. It was at Harbor, and it went very well, and I know Dr. Rollins received a lot of good feedback from that as well. So, I just wanted you to know that those things are happening. Again, that's also part of the Race to the Top initiative and is a huge support, and we've already begun the planning for next June, which is exciting, 'cause it is definitely a lot of work. And Laura Bishop is going to be our lead this year from the Tectosis, helping to plan that along in conjunction with the Earthosis. So, it's great. Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Rollins.
Growing a team, building a culture.
Absolutely.
Constantly. Randy, we moved some things around on the agenda tonight, and I'm gonna take the lead latitude to do that again. I know these building administrators have been on their feet and hard at it for days. We took a group of about 85 or so administrators to a state meeting last week, and this has been a cultural thing for us for many, many, many years, well over 30 years, actually. But it was great to be there with this team and to see their influence and the voice that they had in that conference, which had representative administrators from all around the state. We've had great leadership from Springdale administrators over time in regard to the AAEA organization and its voice as a state body that really addresses education at all levels. Ms. Childress is the principal of AAEA this year, and she convened the conference, became the overseer of the conference, et cetera, and she followed the great leadership that Dr. Brackett had provided just a year before. So, we've had continuity of leadership by Springdale principals over the last two years. And looking back historically, in terms of Springdale leadership, we have been, our principals have really played an enormous role. Mary, I'm going to ask you to come up, if you would. And we had a number of our team members who presented to the administrators of the state. I wanted them to take just a moment and share their comments with you. We had others who were presiders of conferences, et cetera, and also got a good feel for the presentation presented. I'm so very proud of Mary Bill and the great work that she has done throughout her career, and I look forward to her contribution to make that AAEA. So, give a second to this section.
Well, I am very honored to be representing Springdale as the AAEA president this year. And in my opening address of the AAEA Summer Conference, I shared with everyone that I have been waiting 20 years for this opportunity. I have wanted to be AAEA president since Lyndon Childress Knapp got me hooked and involved in AAESP and AAEA from the very beginning of my administrative career. I'm also president of AAEA because Dr. Rollins has also always encouraged us to get involved in our state organizations, to seek leadership opportunities in our state organizations, to be an advocate for student learning, to be innovators in the field of education, and to be a voice promoting and supporting public education at the state and national level. Not only has he encouraged that of us, but he has also modeled that for us in his work. He has been president of AAEA twice. And based on what I could tell from history, he's the only person who's ever been president of AAEA twice. So, in addition to being encouraged, he's a great role model. I also reminded everyone that the real power of AAEA occurs when all of us network and work together. Dr. Cleveland shared a video with us during our Springdale administrative meeting of 80 Amish men picking up an entire house with only their hands and moving the house onto a new foundation. Have you seen that video? I'm guessing he got it from YouTube, but it's a really, really neat video. And his message to us was, we can lift more together than we can individually. And so, I shared with the group, if 80 men can move a house with just their hands, what could 2,800 AAEA members accomplish for the children of Arkansas and for the public education system of Arkansas? As the most powerful educational organization in the state of Arkansas, no other team has the potential to lift more and uplift more than AAEA does, if we do it together. And working together, we can make a difference for the children of Arkansas. Working together, we can enlighten parents, the business community, and legislators to the innovation and superior learning experiences provided in our schools. Working together, we can increase public trust and confidence in education and in public education. The theme for this year's conference was Make Today Count, and I invited everyone to join me in making today count, making this week count, and making this school year count. During the three-day conference, there were 56 keynote and breakout sessions offered by the constituent groups that were all tailored to meet the needs of every different kind of administrator in the state. The sessions were designed to build knowledge and/or skill around current educational trends and issues, so administrators can be more effective leaders in the coming year. Some of the topics were related to assessment, school culture, using data, professional development, legal issues, ethics, special education, legislation, literacy, STEM, personalized learning, finance, career education, leadership, technology, personnel, and the SS State Accountability Plan. All of these are areas that we touch in a day's work. There are also areas of our work that are emerging or currently in a state of transition. So, it's important for us to be engaged in developing a deeper knowledge in these areas. I want to say I was particularly pleased that Johnny Key, our Arkansas Commissioner of Education, attended the entire conference with us. And I can't ever remember a commissioner, they always come and go, but he was really there with us the entire time, and I noticed that. In addition, he presented a session on the state's plan for the new era of accountability. The state's plan outlines a shift from a focus on sanctions and interventions to systems of support and empowering districts to improve their schools. And that plan will be submitted to the federal government for approval in just a few weeks, and we are all eager to see what kind of feedback that we receive for our plan. Like Dr. Rollins said, our Springdale administrative team are absolutely noticeable leaders in the state. Many of us served as presenters and presiders during the conference. During two of the breakout sessions, I had the opportunity to share the great work that Monitor Elementary has done in regards to reducing chronic absenteeism through our partnership with Attendance Works. Additional Springdale leaders are here tonight to talk to you about the role they served. However, there are four or five others that weren't able to be here tonight because of their own back-to-school events. But sharing with you tonight about their role is going to be Mrs. Cindy Covington, who is principal of Childress Knapp Elementary, Mr. Damon Donnell with Don Tyson School of Innovation, Mrs. Shannon Tisher with Southwest Junior High, Kimberly Glass with Federal Programs, Dr. Sherry Bales with Special Education, and Dr. Brackett from Harbor High School.
Thank you, Mary Bill. And first, I would like to say how very proud I was of Mary Bill and the great job that she did representing our district. She did a tremendous job, and I'm very proud of her. I'm proud to serve on the Elementary Principal Association Board of Directors, and I've done that for several years. And one of the things that I love about that is that we have the opportunity as a board to work with the new administrators in the state. I remember being a brand-new administrator and not even knowing what I didn't know. And so, our board works hard to come up with sessions for the new administrators and the new assistant principals. Before the conference starts, there's a training for new administrators and new assistants. So, I was proud to serve as a presider over that session, and then also to present on several topics, including teacher ownership, allowing teachers to help make decisions in our school so that it's not always top-down leadership, also building relationships at our back-to-school training. One of the things Dr. Rollins made sure that we remembered is it's relationships, 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 and making sure that those new principals don't feel isolated in their buildings, but that they are able to work with those around them. There were other presenters and presiders, other principals on the AAESP board, and they did things with the new administrators, such as thinking outside of the box, not doing what's always done so that we don't always get the same results. We talked a lot about back-to-school agendas and timelines so that they know what to expect. Also, how to use technology to help us be more effective in our jobs. And then the favorite session always for those new administrators over the last several years has been a question-and-answer session, where they compose questions during the session and then ask the questions they're afraid to ask their bosses but feel confident in asking us. And so, it's really nice to work with those new administrators on that. I also had the opportunity to be the presider at Mary Bill's sessions on reducing chronic absenteeism, and several Springdale principals attended, and we were all very inspired by that and ready to go back to work to make sure that we have our kids at school and learning every day.
Great job, Cindy.
I have a little handout I want to give you. This was the handout that I gave out at the presentation in North San Antonio. And there's also a hyperlink on there if you want to look at the documents in detail. And that's actually a O, not a zero, and I found that out real fast. People raising their hands and saying, hey, wait a minute, it's not working. I wanted to give a special thanks to Stephanie Anderson for, with AAMLA for allowing me the opportunity. I put in an application with Stephanie, and then Stephanie sent that over to the AAEA, and then it was accepted. This journey all began at Helster Middle School, one Saturday last summer, one Saturday afternoon. And I was standing in front of my file cabinet filing discipline records, because I'd let them stack up. It was completely my fault. And I had my computer on with my video camera on the gymnasium, because my girls were down there playing volleyball. And I thought, man, there's something wrong with this picture. I want to be down there playing volleyball with my girls. And I knew what I wanted to do in my mind as far as a system that would not require me to stand in front of a file cabinet and file discipline records. But I didn't know how to do it. So, I got on YouTube, and I watched a ton of videos, made a bazooka of mistakes. I mean, like, a lot. I tried and tried and tried, but at the end, I found something that worked, and I was able to develop a student referral system that would automatically email parents and students and staff and keep everybody kind of on the same communication link. A counselor or nurse referral system that notified counselors and nurses, and also had a component of the Arkansas Crisis Hotline and National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. An attendance flow chart, and attendance parent emailer that reaches out and utilizes communication with parents, with teachers and parents about attendance concerns. A student-grade notifier that teachers use to communicate student grades and progress to students and to parents. A sign-in, sign-out form that focuses on safety, protects confidentiality, and streamlines the sign-in and sign-out process. And one that really, I think, was the crown jewel of everything that came out of this. It all started with discipline, but it ended with celebration, was a Phoenix Award, and it, I'm now at the Don Tyson School of Innovation, which I'm like super stoked about. Can I say that here? Okay, okay. So, I'm now here, there, and so it's actually called the Phoenix Award there, but at Helster it's called the My Hero Award. And what that is, is that if I recognize somebody in the staff or students recognize each other for outstanding work that they do, then they fill out this form, and as soon as they hit submit, it goes out to the entire staff. So, that our, if that student happens to be walking through the lunch line, then the cafeteria lady will have, hopefully, seen that email and see, hey, Billy, I saw that you helped Miss Smith today in class, and that's awesome, and, you know, I'm really proud of you. And the kid's like, wow, everybody knows this, that. And that then just builds upon itself, okay? Since my presentation last weekend, I've been contacted by principals and superintendent from about 30 different schools across Arkansas. And at the end of the day, I was kind of laughing about this on the way over here. This all, at the end of the day, this all started just because I just wanted to play volleyball with my girls. You know what I mean? And it ended up with me being able to create and share communication tools that are currently now being spread across the state, which is kind of neat. So, do you have any questions, or?
Hi, John. Explain, you were saying that one of, which one of the-
The Phoenix Award-
I think it's that.
Yes, it's, it's-
Are those zero?
Everything is, everything are Os on the hyperlink, and not zeros. So, that GU GL, I'll just shorten the hyperlink for you, so you wouldn't have to type in 14-mile-long hyperlink.
Got it.
Okay. All right.
Well, good evening, or afternoon, I guess, both, good evening and good afternoon. So, I've been an administrator now for 10 years, which is crazy, starting my 18th year in Springdale. And I have never presented at AAEA before, and that was the big learning curve for me, is that I should have been presenting. And more people from Springdale should be presenting, because the most awesome thing about Springdale that I hope you all already know, but I want to reemphasize, is that we are so far ahead in so much of our work, and we need to be sharing that. And I'm kind of a little bit embarrassed to say that I did not apply to present at AAEA. Lance Arbuckle, who is, I believe, the current Secondary Principal of the Year, contacted me and said, hey, everybody around is talking about what you're doing with intensive support systems in your school, and I want you to present at AAEA. And I was like, oh, sure, I would love to do that. And so, I filled out my application and, you know, got on the agenda for a breakout session. And I presented a session entitled SCORE. And SCORE stands for Student-Centered Opportunities for Reaching Excellence. Okay, so that's just a word we use at Southwest. And our SCORE program is, I guess some people in the research world will call it a Tier Three Intervention Program. It's that most intensive level. So, you're looking at 5% to 10% of your student population that no matter how many supports you have in place, how many interventions, how many opportunities, they're still really struggling for a number of different reasons. And we at Southwest put our students into an intensive support system called SCORE. And it's very personalized, and each student who's in the SCORE program articulates and sets their own goals or action plan with a support committee. And it runs in three-week cycles, and we've seen tremendous gains with this program. And the really cool thing about SCORE is elementary teachers are masters of intervention. They're set up for it, they work in Tier Two Intervention, Tier Three Intervention, constantly. And in secondary schools, everyone aspires to have intensive intervention, but nobody knows what that looks like, because you have seven periods a day, every teacher has 150 students, and everybody's kind of like, okay, how do we make this work? And SCORE came, I guess was birthed, from multiple levels of support that we already had in place. And so, it was really awesome for not just me, but for the assistant principals that are with me at Southwest, to stand in front of our peers and just share our work. And I can tell you, similar to what Mr. Donnell said, we have been contacted nonstop since our presentation, and I believe we're up to eight teams, school teams from around the state that have asked to come and visit and to learn more about our work. And there was even a school from California, I don't know how, someone in California got our information, and they called, and they want to set up a conference call about some of the support systems that we have in place as well. And so, the big takeaway for me is I need to be out of my bubble a little bit, and we need to be sharing the work that we're doing on a broader scale. And so, thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Rollins, and to all of you on the board, to serve in Springdale. Again, I just walk away, you know, we all choose to be here, but there is nowhere like Springdale, and that's why it's a pride for me to be here. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Well, I too want to thank you for the opportunity to address the board. Of course, you know I'm the Federal Programs Coordinator. I serve on the Federal Programs Board within the state. I've held all office levels, and I'm currently a regional rep. I'm also on the National Federal Programs Board as an elected secretary for a second term this year, so I'm excited about that. We spend a lot of time with the state after the July 7th notice that came out in the Federal Registrar and asked that they help with our session, so that the folks that came to the session would know that the state was communicating the message and not just us as federal programs coordinators. And we had packed sessions like we've never had before, and I've been presenting at this particular conference for, I don't know, eight or nine years at this point. So, we talked about things that are related to federal programs, from the federal budgets, and the fact that the state is kind of taking a different stance this year in that if you do not have your budget in and approved, then they're not going to be sending those reimbursements for the money that you've already spent. We had initial deadlines as June the 23rd for our federal budgets to be sent in, which we've already met that, and we have gotten approval of our Title II without any corrections that need to be made. So, Dr. Slough, we can move forward with our Title II projects, and we're in the process of reviewing the others. They are also designing a new statement of assurance, that's something that is brought to the school board and to Dr. Rollins for signature at the September meeting typically. They've got to redesign that a little bit in order to bring it up to SS standards, so they're in the progress of that, and it's still due October 1st, so I'm assuming it'll be ready in time for that board meeting. We also talked about some of the deadlines. We don't have our traditional October 1 deadline for our budgets, because we've already submitted those back in June, and then we're going to run to some mid-year corrections after they get some final numbers on charter- And then we're going to run to some mid-year corrections after they get some final numbers on charter schools and those things that, uh, dip into those funds as well. We talked a little bit about Act Ninety that is a new state law that has done away with the general description requirements for our program applications for our categorical funding. So that's not something that we have to do. We just have to make sure that we get that budget within ABSCAN and that we're staying on target with making sure we're monitoring the rules as we begin expenditures to that particular fund. So that'll be, uh, a little bit less work at the district level for those four funds that are in there, which is our English Language Learner, uh, ELL Fund, our professional development that is categorical, our alternative learning fund, and then our N S L dollars that support, um, myriad of programs. We talked about school improvement planning and how that, uh, as we transition this year, that we're still having school improvement plans at the building level and that they're basically having to have an indicator, a something that they're working on. The state in the past told us the number of indicators that we had to work on. Last year, we selected as a District Three. We're going to continue to focus on that. We've already met with our schools, talked about that. Ask them to hold off on updating in the software itself because that platform is being upgraded. It should be released, uh, about ten o'clock tonight if you all want to go to work on that. But it's going to be a lot easier for them to manipulate through and updating things. Where we used to have to go to three or four different places within the software, we can go to one site for some of that. So that's going to be a lot easier. The Act Nine Thirty also repealed and replaced the requirement for the A I Ps and there are now going to be student success plans and that's all a part of moving toward ESA and those will come into play in eighteen nineteen. We're still working out some of, uh, the requirements and what that's going to look like. We talked about the draft of the ESA Plan going to the governor's desk and, and, um, that was already mentioned earlier. The state is expected to submit that in September and then once submitted, USDAO will have a hundred and twenty days to respond to that, um, back to the state. So we'll still have, um, the same level of support from the state with our focus schools as we've had in the past. They're going to continue that this year and begin the transition at the same time to what will occur when we move to ESA, where the state has been working with priority and focus schools. That, uh, prior, the focus school response, which now will be targeted and not focused with the new language of ESA, will fall at the district for, for the districts to provide that support to the schools versus the state. And the state will maintain the inner workings, um, with the comprehensive schools, which are currently, uh, priority schools. And so we talked about that. And then we moved on to talk about some other things within ESA itself as far as within Title One. ESA requires that the state set aside seven percent of the state's allocation of Title One. So there was not an option to do anything different in that. Traditionally, they've set aside four percent. There was an optional, um, possibility for states to set aside an additional three percent for supplemental services. Our state elected not to do that based on feedback from constituent groups because it would just be taking money from our schools in order to get back to our schools, but then you would have to do certain things with it. So we're very glad that they elected not to take that additional set aside. The ten oh three A grants will become ten oh three grants as we move forward. The current focus schools that are Title One schools will be receiving the ten oh three grants this year. We have a meeting that, that will occur in September to talk about that and it'll be a district application. And then we talked a little bit about Hold Harmless. It's something, um, that basically guarantees a district receive ninety-five percent of the funds that they received the previous year as far as Title One is concerned. That is not in play this year because it is a reset year with everything that has happened, but it will come back into play next year. And basically, what that means is if, if a district is on target to basic formula, receive less than ninety-five percent of what it received the previous year, they have to take the big pot and put back in to get those up to ninety-five percent and then redistribute back to those schools that were receiving more than ninety-five percent. Little technical, but just want to make you aware of that. And, um, then there is, um, Act Ten Forty-four that came out this year that is a matching grant program. We're still finding out about that. I've learned that there should be a commissioner's memo coming out pretty soon that's going to deal with some of the details on that. But it's, it's a match where that districts will receive funds from the state when they have supported programs such as tutoring, before school, after school, and pre-K programs. So, um, I have asked for confirmations of the function codes and program codes to make sure that what we're spending already in those areas, that we're making sure that we're coding to the right areas. So when they pull those reports, they'll know what we've spent and it'll be a proportional basis, but they'll all come down to how much money's in the pot and how many districts across the state have already spent funds in those particular areas. So, any question?
Thank you.
How are you?
Good.
Well, Dr. Rollins, as you've reflected about how many years we've been going as, um, administrators in the district, I think as I sit there and do my addition, I'm probably one of the longer serving, not older, longest serving administrator. I think this is my thirty-first year as an administrator in the district. And I too, like Mary Bell, um, served under Linda Childers Knapp. And so as assistant principal, got busy on the elementary board, served as president in that association. And now I've had the opportunity to serve on the board for the Special Education Administrators and I'm serving this year as their president. So.
That's great.
As always, Dr. Rollins has given us that challenge, that, that opportunity to go and represent. And very true, as everyone has said, other districts and out of the state, like Shannon said, are always contacting you and saying, what are you doing and how are you doing this and can we come to visit? So I've had lots of experience with that. But it is my privilege this year to serve as president of A A S C A. And with that, there are opportunities to preside and present and, and get speakers. So just like Cindy spoke about, um, the beginning administrators are under the A A E A umbrella now and so they have a whole program. So we were able to do role alike. So we had other special ed supervisors who are new to the, the position. We were able to speak with them and give them a little, what do you need to do first? And how do you need to find locations, who to call? And have that opportunity to network and build those relationships, not only just in their region, but across the state. Because we all have the same kind of questions and trying to figure out when reports and all are due. So, um, that's a great opportunity to start meeting those folks and get them involved in the association. Also on Wednesday morning, I've sat in that audience for years and heard them announce about administrators of the year. And this year, well, actually on Tuesday, I looked up there and the past president for special ed was sitting up there. I'm like, oh, good. And she's like, kept holding my name tag up. I'm like, I'm supposed to be there? So I got to sit up at the table at lunch, kind of scary to be eating while people are watching you. But on Wednesday morning for the breakfast, and we had a pretty good turnout.
We did.
Which is surprising because sometimes the numbers start dwindening and people are getting back to their districts and all. But, um, I presided over that. But the best part was sitting at that head table and hearing them go over administrators of the year. Elementary Assistant Principal of the Year, Kristy Norwood. Assistant Principal, uh, Principal of the Year, um, Elementary from Dr. Matt Freeman. And then a surprise recognition of our own Dr. Megan Slocom as the Administrator of the Year for the Curriculum and Instruction Group. And so if Dr. Slocom can come up here and talk about that, that was a great joy. See the surprise on her face. I had a great view of her and she was just like, what? So some associations tell others and then some surprising at that meeting.
Yeah.
So we are very proud.
It was a surprise. I was talking to Dr. Rollins and, uh, Dr. Smith the whole time. And, uh, Dr. Abernathy was on stage and he said, I saw you back there just talking naughty to nothing, not paying attention to anything that we were doing. So, um, it was, it was a surprise. I'm glad that we were there and it was, it was definitely an honor. So thank you.
Or you could share your, uh, plaque so we could see it. It's beautiful.
Yes, it's very exciting.
Well, that's a big one.
Yes.
So who wrote that up?
Let, let, let them take a close look.
They, um.
I won't drop it.
They do a nomination and then they submit your name and then I don't know what they do from that for some point. But I was, I was definitely surprised.
Beautiful.
Can you talk that?
I actually did get one, but.
Well, all right.
It was for outgoing president.
Well, that's all right.
A A.
It's always nice to get hardware.
My role, uh, uh, in the state organization began in nineteen ninety-six at A A S S P. And as I was leaving the board as past president, Dr. Love, at the time, stepped down as state coordinator because he was elected to the Board of Directors. And so I believe that was two thousand and two. And I was elected as Arkansas State Coordinator for N A S S P representing, uh, A A S S P and Secondary School Principals Association. And so for fifteen years, I've served as the state coordinator for, uh, the national organization and, and lots of roles that I've played, but mostly advocacy for our work in public education. And, uh, it's been, uh, an eye-opening experiences. I've been to Capitol Hill fourteen times, uh, and, and gone into our congressional offices and, and, and worked really hard trying to build relationships with those folks. And then, uh, I remember, uh, Dr. Love was elected from Arkansas. It was fifteen years ago, uh, to the National Association of Secondary School Principals, uh, Board of Directors, which is not dissimilar to the work that you do, except it's about forty people from around this country. And they have one employee and that is the executive director. And, uh, uh, he, he filled that role for about, oh, I don't know, two weeks. And then Dr. Rollins took him out of the principalship, brought him down to work here. And Wesley White from Russellville became the Arkansas representative. And it, we're on a, it, every fifteen years, Arkansas gets to nominate someone. Of course, back then I was, uh, I, I thought, I'll never be around in fifteen years. Well, this year I was nominated by the Arkansas Association of Secondary School Principals to the national organization. And then in July at Phil-, in Philadelphia, I was elected, selected as a Board of Director for the national organization. And I'm very humbled by that. The work that happens in the national organization is, uh, is, uh, as a Board of Directors is to help set the vision and mission. We have position statements that we often provide. We lead the National Honor Society, uh, as well as the, uh, Junior Honor Society and Elementary Honor Society. And we also, uh, N A S S P also leads the National Association of Student Councils. So it's about leadership. And Dr. Rollins asked me to share with you some of the issues facing public education right now. And I, last spring, I was again, uh, in, in, on Capitol Hill. We got to meet with, uh, uh, four of the, of our representatives. And then the other two offices, we got, got to meet with their education coordinators. I met with both senators and two of the four House of Representatives. Uh, I had three things I wanted to talk to them about. Most of them were surrounded, surrounded the conversation about the president's budget. And if you've seen it, uh, you've heard the conversation about it. It was a, uh, bluntly put kicking the teeth to public schools. We talked about Title II A funding, which is the, the funds that we use to help support our instructional facilitators in our district, training for principals in our district. Uh, it, it hit close to home. There are other, other title issues, but that, that was one that we talked specifically about. The second one was Carl Perkins funding, which is near and dear to our heart in Springdale schools. It's what C T E survives under. And, uh, the Carl Perkins, uh, bill has not been reauthorized in the last, I believe it's eight years, no, ten years. And every year that it's not reauthorized, we lose about one percent funding because of inflation and, and other issues. And so we're, we're down ten percent in funding in Carl Perkins around the country. And that is vital for us. And so we had some very, very candid conversations and a hundred percent of them agreed with those first two issues. That, and, and I remember Senator Bozeman saying that, well, you know, that's just a proposed budget and basically that's not going to fly. And I was thrilled to hear that. He was talking about the Title II A and the Carl, and, and possible reauthorization of Carl Perkins. The last conversation that I had with them was regarding any public funding being used to fund non-public education. That's a hard conversation. We refer to them as vouchers and you're familiar with those. I think that any, uh, type of public funds used to non-public organizations, uh, it skirts right around the conversation about con-, our constitution. So we talked severely, seriously about that. And I made the point in every office, and, and I remember Congressman Womack, more than any, really taking the time to talk. We were standing in front of the portrait of George Washington somewhere over in the house. And, uh, uh, my point was, is that i- if you take dollars away, what, what fulfills that role? Those are the greatest need. Fifty, uh, fifty million, I think, students in America?
Yes.
Okay, fifty plus million students in America. So in that conversation, uh, I, I said, quit comparing us to the inner city situations that are, are really what a lot of people think about with public education. And he conceded that. The Washington DCs, I was just, Mr. Fontenobles and I were just looking. By the way, I'm the only one who are not happy about Mr. Fontenobles, uh, moving in the position he's in. But I, I'm proud of him and thrilled for him. But, uh, what, the headline was, uh, a thousand teachers let go in Chicago public schools. It's, it's just, uh, you cannot compare the rest of the country with what's going on in the Detroit's and the Houston's and the Los Angeles and the Chicago's and the Washington DCs and the New York City when it comes to public education. I have personally, uh, by, uh, Twitter invited our, uh, Ms. DeVos to come see Springdale schools, uh, multiple times, by the way, I think thirty-eight last time I counted. Because I think they need to see a different perspective. And Congressman Womack, who's a great friend of ours, said, what do you think about those schools? Should we not be helping those kids? I said, absolutely, we should, should be helping them, but not by taking funding away from and, and providing it to public, uh, to non-public schools or non-public entities. So those are the three main issues that N A S S P, then they have others. There's a list this long on our website of position statements. And I must confess, I don't agree with all of them. I'm probably, uh, more of a, uh, in, in the middle and lean to the right on some of the conversations. But I do am honored to serve, uh, this organization and to represent this school district because I am a strong believer in, in the vision that you have set for each and every student in our state. So I will entertain any questions regarding my role if there are any, but I'm honored.
Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Bell, would you like to close for us? Yes, she would. I know she would.
Good answer.
No, I, I think Shannon said it beautifully, but we all, um, absolutely appreciate the honor and opportunity of representing Springdale and sharing the great things that we, we do throughout the state. And, um, we all feel so privileged to have the opportunity to, to work here and, um, love telling people, we're very proud to tell people that this is where we work and this is where we serve. And love, just love the opportunity, every chance we get to, to make Springdale look good, but also, um, to help other people around the state be able to do the kinds of things that we do. Because, um, Dr. Rollins tells us every time we have a principal's meeting, he stands in front of us. And I, I could do a great Dr. Rollins impression because he, he stands in front of us every time and says, I work with the finest leadership team in the state. And he means that with all his heart, but he, um, has also done a great job of assembling a very fine leadership team. And, um, it is, it's an honor and privilege to serve in Springdale, but also to have the opportunity to share what we know and do so well with others so that, that they can serve their children in close to the same kind of way, not just like us, but, but close. So, thank you.
We appreciate you coming in tonight. I know you're all really busy right now. Not that you're not ever not busy, but.
You're welcome to say one more thing.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
No, I told Dr. Rollins, it is an exciting time of the year, and after all these years, I still have butterflies this time of year, can't wait for the first day of school, can't wait for teachers to come back on Monday. Just had the best day yesterday. Spent a lot of time yesterday talking about empathy, Dr. Rollins, and how, how we can think about our work this year through the lens of empathy. And that's how we really reach that level of personalization, is by really thinking deeply about walking in our students' shoes and what they need from us academically and socially and emotionally. So it was just, I couldn't, I woke up, I don't know, probably 3:30 Sunday morning, was at school, I mean, Monday morning, and was at school by about 6:00, because I couldn't wait for teachers to come. And it'll be the same way next Monday, when our kiddos are coming. So it is a busy time of year, a very exciting time of year, have those butterflies, can't sleep, and it's all going to be great when our kiddos come through the door Monday morning.
Thank you, Mary.
Well, have fun. Thank you.
You know, really, that's a, that's a great place to start. Empathy, empathetic leadership, it's where innovation starts. Relationships, relationships, relationships. Long been on our, on our leadership board, and we know those things, but coming back and thinking about it again is really, really important. Brenda just walked out of the room, and I want y'all to know, and maybe I'll wait until she gets back, that she has done a wonderful, wonderful job trying to communicate the works of this board, our district, the decision-making process of our community. And I was told just today that maybe she's going to be relocating, so y'all find a way, y'all find a way to, find a way to...
Her husband's got something going on. She didn't react, have you? Our reporter?
She has, yeah. If I'd known he was going to do that, I wouldn't have read all that stuff, right?
It's a revised book.
Okay.
We supposed to read these?
Hey, come back, Michael. Mike, come back. Come back, fella. Come up here, come up here and stand with me. We, we did a, we did a good job recognizing this guy. But some of you, I know, have had children in his classes. We are bringing somebody to a relatively new position that really represents the thinking and desire of this board. And I honestly, I can never thank you enough for, for your position and recognizing it and saying, "We need help to identify those kids early on who really are gifted and have great abilities." And then, families need support, they need background, they need information with the idea that we can get to the goal we all have of advancing student performance. Sure made a lot of sense to me, that rather than bringing a candidate forward who had to read about it and learn about it from a lot of secondary sources, we had a chance to bring somebody forward who's been, who's been walking in those shoes. And I think that's powerful. Mike might say, "From an administrative perspective, we'll work together, and I'll need some help" and so forth. But the power of this position, in my view, is being able to connect with children and the families and build a plan together that really brings hope into them realizing their true potential and promise. We're so proud of you here. I had to ask him, I said, "We were talking about his AP class, his AP classes over time. You know how we focused on getting kids ready for the AP exams and scoring a 3, 4, or 5? And we talked about state averages? This guy's just about doubling the state average in terms of getting kids ready for those high scores." It's that kind of personal experience, in my view, that can stand in front of kids or walk hand-in-hand with kids and stand in front of groups of parents and really do the kind of things that this board wants us to do. I'm so glad to be here, sir. I'm going to try to give you a little way to go about speaking right now. You, here's something else. We're so glad to have you.
Thank you, sir.
Give him one hand. Now you go.
You're dismissed.
You wish you could do that.
That's pretty good.
Jared's going to talk to us a little later, and he'll give you a good count. But there's some things, let's just talk about some things in general that are real important for us. We'll have over 1,700 teachers. From the standpoint of new people to the district, you're going to have, your number's well above 100, 150 employees who weren't here next year. I'm not talking about additional new positions, I'm just talking about new people, given all the change that goes on in a district our size. And we've talked over time about the power of culture, culture that supports the kind of initiatives and activities and achievement levels that you see in front of you every month. I was a little shocked, as a matter of fact, I think I've misquoted numbers. I thought our support personnel numbers were in that 900-plus range. And Kelly raised his hand the other day and said, "Doc, that number's really changed a lot." We have about 1,100, according to Kelly's conversation with me, of support personnel. So we're moving toward a staff of 3,000 employees. We've been big for a long time, we know that. We could very easily be in that 23,000 student range, I would expect we could. You know, it's, it's kind of hard to know until you get there, given the mobility of our students and all those things. 23,000 kids, 3,000 employees, moms, dads, parents, business leaders, chambers, et cetera. From the standpoint of opening a school year, in order to try to keep us all going down the road, thinking together, planning together, pushing and pulling together, and finding the right position together, these are some things you ought to know about. We met with new teachers, probably had 100 or so new teachers in the group. We met with all of our principals, again, about another 100 people. Then we had our instructional principals' meeting, where Megan and Marsha and Kathy and others spent a full day trying to get us all thinking together about an instructional plan and giving them an opportunity for input into it, et cetera. You've heard about our participation in the state administrative meeting. We've had a school board meeting along the way already. I had an opportunity on Saturday to visit with representatives from state PTAs who'd traveled from around the region, really across the state, who met at Hunt Elementary. And so, I had an opportunity to visit briefly with them. Now, now comes kind of the closure before the kids get here on Monday. We have our chamber meetings on Thursday. The secondary, we just kind of rotate those every year. The secondary group will be there Thursday morning, probably from about 7:30 to 11:00. That's the timeframe. So if you can come and join us, I'd really appreciate it. Y'all have done such a beautiful job with, with that participation, just being there to help greet the teachers and welcome them and be introduced and let them see your faces and let us all share the contributions that y'all make every, every time we meet and obviously every day. The elementary, then, after the secretary will dismiss around noon, and the elementary will reconvene about 1:00, be there until about 3:30 Thursday. So that's our day with chamber, business community, and again, solidifying what has been a great relationship over time. Friday's our district meeting, and again, one of the little things come along that are really nice, the Everett Automobile Group is giving away the use of a vehicle for a year, which is a really nice thing. They started that, I do believe, here in Springdale, and now it's spread to agencies around the state. I'm really glad to see them continue. Our program will start at 9:00, and we'll finish around noon. We have great keynote speakers who will be addressing the group to kind of continue to help grow our understanding about what it means to personalize teaching and learning. And these are distinguished leaders. And how creativity comes to the, to the conversation, because that's an integral part of this address of innovation. Let's draw three circles. Okay, here's one, let's just talk about core knowledge, just knowledge, okay? Here's two, let's talk about creativity. Here's three, let's talk about motivation. Let's pull those, push those together until they overlay. Think about that model, knowledge, creativity, motivation. And there are bodies of information behind each of those, but it's that overlay that gets to the heart of innovation. My guess is, and I mean this with all humility, all of us have a lot to learn about this idea of innovation and how we can bring it forward into a public school setting and really try to improve the way we serve children. It's not a new process for us, we've been at it for a long time, probably in a studied way, at least five years. It was, it's been that history of participation by great teachers and great principals and, and our central office team and this board and the community coming behind that, that's allowed us to develop an instructional delivery system. And sometimes Megan doesn't share this enough, and I may ask her to come back and give you more information about that. But the curriculum that has been developed by this team, and specifically, our teachers on special assignments, and it might be our technology folks, it might be our literacy folks, it might be our math people, some of the very finest educators we have working together to write curriculum, to do what? To allow us to develop an innovative personalized education plan. A lot of you are empirical. We've got some accountants in the room. I could not imagine the number of man-hours that's been invested by the number of people who've been trying to advance this conversation. My guess is, a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now, we'll be having these conversations, just like we, for 30 years, we've been having conversations about Teach Them All. This is, this is a sea change. And teachers will needs help and support and encouragement, and we have to find ways to make sure they get it. That's all there is to it. Because this kind of change is not something that will happen without support and encouragement and understanding and realizing the stretch and grow that every teacher's going to have to go through to do this. So I send my little, I hand out materials the last time we met. Some of those materials were still here after the meeting. And I'm thinking, "Well, I overdid it, it was too long." Mike tells me, "Nobody's going to read a three-page letter to the legislature." And he's right, I, I got all that. But I was sharing with you the work that I had shared with principals that frankly took months to put together. Now, why did I do that? I want to tell you again, I honestly, I'm to the point where I, I kind of get it, but it's time for y'all to get it, too. These things don't happen without you, just they don't happen. If we're together, if we thought about it, if we pushed and pulled, if we tried to find the right balance, and we were kind of going forward together, we've got a chance to take others along with us. We can't be all over the page, that won't work. I know that, I think you know that. And this, this great board and your participation and connectivity to the community and just who you are gives impetus to what we're trying to do. So I've now given you a revised version. If you, if you hang around another week, I'll get it down to nine pages, maybe, I don't know. But I, I want you to, I really hope you'll go back to what I gave you last time. I hope you'll look at it and set it down, look at it, and say, "Are you, is he crazy? What, I don't, I don't know." But whatever. In, in my opinion, the issues of the day require what we're doing here. We've worked really hard to build, and I'm talking about over a 35-year career, that graphic that's called the Stairway to Educational Excellence. And if you really look at that and you think of all the programs, and frankly, the blood, sweat, and tears of teachers and principals and so forth, to walk up that stairway that we're framing as a stairway to educational excellence, you can appreciate even more what I'm talking about. There are about four things I want you to have as an underpinning. The most important variable in educational change, reform, improvement, performance, is the classroom teacher, always. We'll never be any better than the classroom teachers we've had or have, and I've never said anything different. But we all have to grow and broaden our perspective and try to connect better with kids. And so, tonight, the term empathetic leadership was introduced. Again, just trying to look at the way we do business through a kid's eyes. What do we have to do to better connect all the kids to the learning? And under that Teach Them All piece that I borrowed from Dr. Larry Lazzott in the '60s, is, is this conceptual understanding that we can teach all kids well if we do our work well. And he laid out seven corlets, and we built this school district in the early years, especially on the Effective Schools research. And then, we moved it forward in program after program after program. The CAP program, which we started in the late '80s. The academies, which we worked in partnership with our business community. The small learning communities, which we, again, borrowed from the Southern Region Education Board and Gene Bottoms and all those. So there's Lazzott with the Effective Schools and Bottoms with the, with the CTE and the CAP and so forth. These organizations picked our work up and distributed that all over the country. Those are foundational pieces. And you just continue that lineage, and I won't go through all that again, but it's really important from the standpoint of where we find ourselves today. We've made good progress, I think, in terms of career-ready, college-ready work, but it's not over, Kevin. We're going to go back and meet again and again and again with the business community, and they're going to talk with us about their emerging needs and what we're doing with the idea that we try to close the gap all along the way. So the conversations we've had that have led to the School of Innovation have been an extension of that kind of cooperative effort. We're getting ready to do Phase Two, so we've got to play that all over again, with your leadership, with input from all of the stakeholders in the district, teachers, principals, community leaders, et cetera, to what? To try to get it right. And so, as I was meeting with the principals just a few days ago, that was, that's our message. If you're able to come over on Friday morning, there's, there's an enormous amount of teacher participation in that event on Friday. We've got a great panel, the teachers are great, and we'll have conversations about things that they're really interested in. And we'll, we'll do it without any rehearsal or anything like that. But I just think it's good dialogue, and she'll, she'll come and help me if I fall down, I know she will. So keeping our community together, collaborating around issues, I don't have to tell you what's happening in the, in the country today. I've shared with you repeatedly this idea that personalization is the key to keeping kids and families connected. If you've got happy kids, high-performing kids, are performing well, my guess is they're going to remain a part of the school district for a long time. Currently, we've got about 800 students, about 800 students. That's, didn't happen yesterday, it's been over time, it includes the church schools, it includes emerging charter schools, et cetera, et cetera. We've got about 800 Springdale kids who don't attend the Springdale School District. There's about $9,000 behind each of those children. Now, what does that mean to us? That, that creates a revenue stream that lets us serve all the children. So we've got, we absolutely have to compete. We have to compete for kids, for families, et cetera. And if, the literature that I've given you, I think, should give you confidence that, hey, maybe... maybe that makes some sense. Yes, we're gonna ask good teachers to do even more, maybe than they've had to do in the past. We're gonna ask them to be learners so that maybe they can better connect, better serve all the kids. That's the profession we're in. There's nothing easy about this profession, nothing. And if you really are committed heart and soul to teaching all children, then you've gotta constantly learn and look for new ways to do this. I think that progression that I have shared with you in that document is very, very important. What I've summarized for you tonight, again, is taking some of those most salient points and maybe getting it in something that's not quite so cumbersome, et cetera. I can, can and be happy to continue and try to refine that. I believe it's worth your reading. I believe it's worth your reflection. And we need clarity in terms of if there are issues, it's really pushing any of you, we need to talk more about that. And I expect all of you are being pushed. I certainly am being pushed. But I think that's part of growing and stretching. This is not rhetoric on my part, and I think there's some significant evidence to back it up. I honestly believe that some of the best work in America is going on in this school district right now. And that happens, Mr. President, because this board has provided enormous leadership. We've done things together to bring great teachers to the district. We've created the kind of model that attracts other great districts. We've had a lot of shifting, and, and I worry about that when you invest heavily in someone and for whatever reason they move to another district. The, the people who rushed in to replace those who have moved or what retired, moved to other positions, et cetera, are absolutely phenomenal. As we open this school year, I think without question, we've got the best team we've ever had. The four variables, great teachers in the classroom, followed very quickly by great principals leading the buildings, followed very quickly that Item Three is a strong reach, a rich, deep curriculum where learning is personalized. We don't have to walk but a mile or so across town to see the influence of the model that's just in its infancy when you personalize teaching and learning. Our Don, the students in the Don Tyson School of Innovation have led academic performance in our district since we opened the doors. What's different? The model's different. The way you interact with children's different. The way you move away from a seat time to a competency-based model where kids can move at their own pace. Anytime, anyplace, any-paced learning is a powerful conceptual model. So why am I doing this again? I just want to, it is so important, in my view, that we be together, that we do all we can to understand the issues together, and that we find the common ground that we can go forward together on. It won't happen without you. It won't happen, if you're a passive learner, you've gotta be authentically engaged, just like I have to be. And together, if we don't have all the answers, I'm pretty confident we'll figure, we'll figure them out. And we've got a great team around us that's working to do that very thing. So you've seen some evidence of that tonight, just like you've seen every time you've met. So yes, what I'm talking to you about, what I'll talk with our teachers about, is a heavy lift. But Springdale teachers, over time, have consistently responded to the kind of challenges if they believe they could better serve our kids in the process. I think we'll be fine. I, I love the model, I like it. I, I know there'll be some pushes and pulls, and that's where we've gotta stand with our teachers and behind our teachers to make sure that happens. Y'all wanna have homework session after you've read this?
No, thank you.
Have a little dialogue, you wanna test her, too?
Number four, don't get lost here, I'm waiting for number four.
Number four. I'm gonna let you do it.
Oh, great.
Well, those, those strong partnerships with family and moms and dads and businesses, et cetera, those, those four central elements are essential for progress.
Gotcha.
And I think we have an opportunity to bring all that forward, if we do it in a way that's respected by the great teachers that we have in our district. Floor, floor's open. Any comments or questions? I didn't think you necessarily needed me to go through that with you line by line. But if you do, I'd love it. I really would love the opportunity to sit and talk with each of you so you understand the thinking and research behind it. Mike, why don't we just start? Kevin, or you start? Either way, anybody wants to? Any comments or questions?
I don't mind, I don't mind going first, 'cause I wasn't here last time, so you did all this for me, probably.
Sure, I did. Right, exactly.
You know, I, I think that, that thought there of being passionately engaged, that's what I wrote down, is that I think sometimes I'm guilty of not always being passionately engaged. I think I'm engaged, but it's always with passion, so I need to read it.
I think when you do, it was topical, so is that good?
Yeah, I think you've, you've challenged us all to re-go, reread it and go through it, provide you some feedback, so.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that I'm in a position right now to give you some good honest feedback.
Yeah, we don't have to do it today.
I think, I think you do need to know that we obviously support this endeavor, so for me personally, I don't, I'm not gonna speak for everybody on the board, but I would make some good assumptions that we do support and trust your guidance on this.
That means the world to me. But please understand, we're trying to figure it out. We don't have all the answers. I wouldn't even presume you do.
But we have some answers.
I think it was probably some spirited conversations, I'm assuming, and you probably already had some spirited conversations, but I think we all need to be open and have those spirited conversations. And trust, and trust that when we ask, it's only because we wanna seek knowledge about the unresolved or just simply the knowledge.
I, I just think we do these things together the way we've always done it, and I don't know that it's a surprise, any staff member we have, but I fully expect that every teacher gonna get a different, they're gonna need, they're gonna need support and encouragement, et cetera, because we're talking about a different delivery system. We're not talking about somebody just standing in front of their class and giving a strong lecture. Now, we're talking about a teacher's planning based on where every child is to the best of their ability and bringing forward a support system that gives those kids a chance to really flourish. What does that mean? Well, we have to define that together. That's just part of it.
I think one of the things is, you know, today's society and the, and the culture today, everybody has a different desire. And I think you can get in trouble if you try to please all of those special wants all the time, 'cause I think you have some basis to what your education needs are, they don't have to be really specific. Doesn't mean you can't individualize your learning, but there's typically 20 to 25 in these elementary schools per classroom, if they all 25 have some different objective than, I don't know, how you get anything done.
That's exactly right. But if, if we have a good handle on what the essential learnings are, and we can examine the delivery system that best helps each child attain those essential learnings, that's the pathway I think we're gonna walk down. You're right. I think it's, I understand the diversity, yes.
I don't think I've ever told you how much I appreciate the fact that you have our staff writing the curriculum for our children, that you go out and study it in the community. You get ideas and, and comments from teachers and community. You said it just a little while ago. But I, I guess what I didn't really realize is how many districts use these packaged curriculum programs instead of really focusing in on what their students really need. And I know I've never said that to you. And I realize how huge that is more and more when you see the work in the development of our curriculum and what you're doing. And I understand the, the volume of that, you know? And I, I do, I think that's really important, and I don't know if our community and outside, this district doesn't realize that. But I appreciate that, I, I really do, and I really value that.
Whatever we can do to help our kids, if that will transfer and help other children in other districts, states, nationally, internationally, that's a good thing. To me, that's what trying to be a professional is all about. If we had our, we had our way, we'd just Teach Them All, right? That's what we'll do. Mr. President, comments?
I'm not sure if I have a whole lot more to add beyond what we talked about this morning, other than the fact that I think that, I think I can speak for the board in that we will go back and look at least this more revised edition that's a little bit shorter, and, and if not, go back and look at the original book that you gave to us and, and look at it, and I think that we'll, we'll contact you if we have some specific issues.
I love to talk with y'all, you're the, you're just a phenomenal sounding board to me, and provides confidence if I'm thinking we're working together or if there are questions you have that give us direction to try to sort them out and bring more answers. Please do. Jeff, comments?
I have read it twice now, so. When you look through here, I guess the, what kept coming up in my mind is, I mean, this is all great, you can't, I don't understand how anybody can disagree with any of this. But I also, and maybe it's kinda buried, and, and part of this is, is just the old-school rigor and, and the discipline. How do we balance, in the new environment that Kevin talks about, it is a difference. Society's different.
It is.
But I still feel like, at the end of the day, it comes down to, to discipline, punch-the-clock type attitudes from, from the kids and, and commitments. Shannon Tischer talked about her efforts to get those kids over and separated so the rest of the kids can continue that, that learning. That's huge. And today's society is so much different, but at the end of the day, I still think we need tons of rigor and a lot of discipline and, and written down, you know, disruptive kids or distractions, discipline, uniforms, summer school, a little bit extra time, just that. And I know it's kinda buried in here, but, but it just felt like, maybe I'm just old-school, I just, I feel like it's so important today for parents and kids to just really get discipline and rigor.
I think, I think you'll find the more time you spend with it, that the rigor is deeper than anything we've ever done. I think you'll find that the relevance is stronger than anything we've done before. I think you'll find that the relationship piece that really makes the connection teacher to kid is stronger and the potential for all of that. And the high expectations, that fourth variable, I think what will happen, and we're seeing it happen every day, it's not, it's not a matter of disconnect or looseness, it's a matter of kids being better connected to learn because they love what they're doing. They're moving at their own pace as opposed to waiting for everybody to catch up. The model itself is about as old-school as it can be from, from, from the standpoint that, to me, makes all the difference.
But I do think that there's a little more freedom within it in the seat times, and I think it, it becomes harder, it becomes, I guess somebody made a point about trying to please everybody, and it just, it just doesn't work at some point, some level. And it's a challenge, I don't, I don't have an answer. You gotta give some freedom and some flexibility and student-led learning and all that, but at the same time, you gotta get down to the, to the rigor and the discipline. It's, it's a balance, I don't have any answers. Just, that was an observation, read it through a couple of times.
Great observation, and perhaps Kevin was thinking along that line as well. Other things that we may need to go look at and see for ourselves, if it looks stronger or weaker, 'cause from the standpoint of the model itself, you would think if a kid likes what he's doing and he's connected to the learning at a level he's never been before, that'd give the learning a much higher look. Those are the selling points to me of this model. And so let's, let's look and see if, if that's really happening or not. The, the performance data is very clear. It's way over the top from the standpoint of what our experience. That's, I mean, that's right in your wheelhouse. Ms. Jeff?
I think my, I'm gonna take away from reading it, other than, you know, everything, I agree with everything, was just continuing to figure out student buy-in. I mean, if we don't have, you know, have great teachers and we can have great principals and we can have it, especially in our upper levels, student buy-in. And the, one thing that I think we have a phenomenal part in our district is the AP classes. I mean, it blows my husband away every spring when my kids are going to school all, you know, all week and then going on Saturday because an AP teacher wants them to be at a review or wants them to learn this or stay after till six o'clock or be up at, six o'clock night or be up at seven o'clock in the morning to go to an extra. If they're willing to buy into, if I do this, I'm gonna succeed on that test, well, my kids are all very different and they still would all do it. So what enables our AP teachers to get their students to buy into that extra effort, that extra rigor? And how can we move that across the district, across the upper levels and saying, you know, and expressing it to our students that, you know, truly buying into this hard work and the rigor that goes to it? I mean, I know they all have so much extra baggage sometimes that they're bringing to school, so we always have to take that into account, but I just, I'm trying to figure out how to get our students, you know, as excited about, about it as we're getting our teachers, which is hard.
You? Anything else? Mr. President, I'll, I'll play up your lead. Let's just be students. Let's, let's see if collectively we can think and support and encourage higher performance for all of our kids, if that's where we're coming from. Thank, thank you for that, I appreciate it very much. Any questions about anything else on my section of the agenda, Randy?
Not for me.
I think we're ready probably to move forward.
We're ready.
Thank you, board, I appreciate it very, very much. Dr. Cleveland, you ready?
No. She's already left to go take pictures and stuff. I got it. All right. Pictures.
Field studies, Walker, Tyson, and Springawa. And again, it's for you, something for you to take home, I know you like to have, have some things to review. But I want to talk to you about personnel first, and that's just for, for your application later. Dr. Rollins created a school board luncheon calendar for you today, so if you, you got that, we just wanted to make sure you had a hard copy, and we'll make sure that Leanne sends you a digital form as well. And if you would like, we can send you calendar invites that go straight to your phone. Will that work?
That'd be awesome, really nice.
This will be rude, is, is.
It's not so lazy.
It'll just go to your phone. Dr. Slokan, you might do that for them. Okay, wonderful. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Include all of them.
All right. Well, let's talk about personnel. You've got several Excel spreadsheets for you. Dr. Rollins told you, we've interviewed and hired around 150 so, or so, and I expect, really, as of today, that number may be pushing 170. Every year, I'm surprised it's that number, but typically, it's, that's just the way it is. We, we get a lot of resignations toward the end of the year. And I know you all are very concerned, always, about our efficiency, just like I am. We're on the razor's edge all the time. It's a, it's a really critical balance. If you overstaff, then you could run the risk of not having the resources you need in order to educate all kids at the level we need to do that. So we're constantly looking at that number. We're also looking at what fund we pay our staff from. You know, we have categorical funds and we have district funds. I've given you a breakdown in color of those expected funds from where that, those new staff members are coming from. a typical staff member. And then we have yellow, which would be ALE or NSLA funds. So those are the categorical main buckets, as Kelly has talked to you about before, having those different buckets. But overall, I provided you another comparison. We like to do this. In fact, I've got to give a lot of credit to Dee Hobbs. Dee Hobbs helps pull all of these things together. She's actually remarkable. And I know you know that already, but I'd like to give her additional credit. Kelly and she helped me tremendously all the time. So anyway, as comparative from, from 1617 cycle to 1718, currently as of today, we've gone from 671 certified employees to 1701. But we like to do that in full-time equivalents. Does that make sense? Because we have a lot of part-time people. We have job share people. We have, so to get into the weeds with you, we've gone from 1660 full-time equivalents to 1690. Now, you say, well, Jared, you're not a very good mathematician. That's 43 new staff members. I understand that. Well, we've absorbed 12 across the district. And you say, well, how do you absorb 12? We're growing. We have student shifts all the time, as you know, from school to school. So we may need to add kindergarten at Young because people have moved into Young, but they might have moved from Tyson Zone or from Bay Aries or wherever. So it's a constant shift. This is like a, it's like holding a big bucket of water and it just kind of sloshes around all the time. You're constantly trying to keep it still. So that's really what we're doing. So we've absorbed 12. We are adding a total of 30.43 new FTEs or full-time equivalents. You can see that where the distribution lies as far as across the district. As you know, we've, we're gaining 70 or so to 100 seventh graders over at the School of Innovation, plus we're adding additional slots because those kids have now gone to the 11th grade and new staff coming in. We're also adding electives like music and some other things over there. So there's going to be that natural progression. There's about 11 right now, new positions at the School of Innovation. There will likely be 12 or 13 by the time we get settled, depending on the number of kids and what electives they, they finally settle on. We, we should be there, but that's what I expect. I think we've got a couple in the hopper, Dr. Rollins. So that's where we are. I'm, I'm concerned about our classified numbers. We've broken them down from 1617 to 1718. We had 1,035 last year. We have 1,041 this year. But the big difference is our bus drivers. Folks, and I'm not laying it on thick here, I'm really, truly concerned. It is so difficult to find quality bus drivers that want to work. And that's a national trend. It's just the way it is. Right now, we have 101. As you can see, last year, we had 112. Now, our, our bus department has done a remarkable job in trying to continue to refine routes. Robert Wadini, Dana Samples, they have done, really, yeoman's work in this day. They've done great work at trying to figure out and squeeze these things. We've even thought about maybe increasing walk zones and things like that. Well, you just can't. You just can't. So right now, we're down to 101 drivers. We're advertising really on billboards. We're advertising in the paper. We're, we're advertising everywhere. You've seen our buses. You've seen our buses out there with those big white signs with the red letters that say we're advertising. So if you know anyone, and this is a plea to you, if you know anyone that's willing to serve in that capacity, we would be more than willing to, to help. Now, some things we've done, we've hired new staff, let's say our coaching staff, that they're going to be going on these field trips. These new coaches, Dr. Rollins and I have said, you know, hey, you're going to get your CDL. And so whenever we have these field trips, games, whatever, we're asking you all to take care of your bus because, you know what? You love those kids. You're taking care of them anyway. And we can't afford to pull drivers off routes. We just can't do that anymore. We've done the best job we can. But, you know, I'd hate for any kind of a field trip, regardless of whether it's athletics or going to the study center or whatever, to have to sit there and wait and maybe miss a game or what. We just, it's time. And so we're doing that. And, and I know you support us in that effort. So we're doing the best we can to attract them. But our, our bus drivers that we have now are wonderful. They're great people. They're excited about getting to come back. There are just too few. I probably stepped on the bus driver thing way too much.
Just, just for clarity, we made adjustments in bus driver salaries, et cetera, try to make those positions more attractive.
Yes, sir.
Is it too early to know if those adjustments have made a difference? Or do you have some insights that would help us with that?
I wish I did have some insight, Dr. Rollins. I do know that the people that we've retained are excited about the opportunity to, to earn more money and they, they want to make sure that they don't have any accidents, they don't have any discipline issues, and that they earn that, that potential bonus. So we've gotten a really good response. They're also excited about some of the improvements we're making on the grounds out there, you know, more lighting and some things like that. We're eventually going to have to look at some new pumps. I think Dr. Rollins is aware, new pumps and tanks and things like that. We've got to improve our lot because we have quite a few buses. Yes, sir?
Are we paying our coaches for driving the kids?
Oh, sure. We'd be paying somewhat, somebody one way or the other.
Okay.
So if a coach drives, he'll be paid for his travel, but, or she, doesn't matter who. Yeah, we're not going to say, you have to do that, and we're not going to pay them.
Okay.
So we're paying one way or the other.
All right.
So. Do you have any questions in regard to personnel? It's really, really labor-intensive. I don't want to think it's, I don't think it just sounds terribly easy because he's, he's already run a few pens trying to sign all of our recommendations. But anyway, if you don't have any questions, I'll move on. And I want to value your time. In regard to our work over the summer, I think Mr. White told me we had around 100 and tho, 100 or so, 130 or so summer projects, and we're within 19 of having all those completed. These projects can range from, you know, repainting a building to significant construction. I think you've seen some of their work, and we're all impressed with their work. But I'll, I'll skip that and go straight to our construction projects. We have three significant projects. We've got the Springdale High Athletic Facilities. We've got Tyson Elementary Edition. We have Walker Elementary Edition. So I have some pictures here for you. There are some details there if you want, just to read through, to know where we are. I can tell you on the very back, some new pictures from Tyson, especially. The slab was poured yesterday morning. They've done the saw cuts as of today. So that's, that slab's well underway. We're hoping that we can get a good plan together in order to build that front entrance during school. But it's going to take a coordinated effort of how we drop kids off and buses and parents. So we'll come up with a significant plan, bring that in front of Dr. Rollins, and you'll know about that as that happens. But we'll have to work in conjunction with the parents, the students, and the faculty over at Tyson Elementary. It's not nearly the difficulty, difficulty over at Walker due to the location. And there's plenty of space over there. So.
What was going on with SHS gym doors?
That was, we replaced the doors. They were sagging and dragging.
Oh, okay.
And I, I've talked to you about that project, but Abrams just finished that up. They look great. We put continuous hinges. We're not going to have any more of that sagging and dragging. And they ought to last another 30 years. So that's our hope. I think it looks really, really good. Besides, part of the reason for those new doors, Mr. Hudson, is that we'll be using those facilities there for track and for tennis. So bathrooms, things like that. So we need...
Those are going to be our bathrooms for the...
We don't have those kinds of facilities. So we'll be using the gym as well. Okay? I'm sorry?
Senator...
Oh, okay. Okay. Well, unless you have any questions in regard to our facilities, we're updating. We are going to the ninth hour. Had a couple of questions about bookshelves and things like that. We're churning them out. We are working our, our best to try to get everything ready on day one. And I have to thank the teachers for their patience because many of them have classrooms that we've touched. And so they're being very patient with us and very kind to us. And they haven't stomped any feet or clapped any hands yet or used their teacher voice. So we're excited about that and we'll try to help them. Okay. I think the next part for me, I'd like to ask Kathy Laundre to come up. We have a wellness opportunity here. You have your nurses report. And she's just going to talk to you for just a minute or so.
Thank you to the school board, Dr. Rollins and Dr. Cleveland, for this opportunity to share with you the 2016, 2017 school nurse survey. This is due to Act 935 that came into effect a couple of years ago. So my nurses keep a survey, keep track of all the things that go on in the classroom as far as screenings, blood pressure checks, kids in and out of the office, who, how many we send home, how many we send back to class. This has turned into the state. And by law, we're supposed to report this to the school board. So this is my report of this last school year. So you have a copy of, of the report in there. If you have any questions, feel free to ask at this point.
Do you have your questions?
Yes, if you have any questions.
So 710 home visits.
Yes. Home visits are one...
That's a lot, isn't it?
It is a lot. But it may be because we can't reach the parent. The phone number is disconnected. We have a sick child at school. So we have to let them know. Maybe they're sleeping. A lot of times, the children will tell us, they work the night shift, they're sleeping. So we'll knock on the door. If they don't answer, then we'll leave a note on the door. And we have a sick child. We can't send them home on the bus.
But that 710 is all medical related?
Yes. All medical.
That's no counselor. That's medical.
No. No. And we don't go by ourselves. Sometimes we take the school resource officer with us. Other times, the school counselor go with us or the principal.
It's going after mine.
That's something we've always done.
Oh, no. Yeah, that's a great question.
And just to keep up with the kids and also if they don't come back to school the next day, we also go back on a home visit and find out where they're at. How come they're not here? Did they go to the doctor? Did they get their medication? Just make sure it was all taken care of properly. We want them well and come back.
Is there any action that we need to take on this as a board or you just report us?
No. I'm just reporting to you.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. That's all I'm supposed to do.
Okay. Well, it looks like you have your work cut out for you.
So are food allergies up or down?
About the same. Really. And we have a new form that we're using from the state that we got from Carol Godfrey so that we'll have the physician to sign off on it. Sometimes the parents would say, my child's allergic to this. I say, okay, do you have an EpiPen? Well, no. Haven't really been to the doctor. I say, all right, here's our form. Take it to the doctor and get it filled out for us. So you make sure it's accurate. To make it easier in the cafeteria, especially when they say they can't have all these things to eat and we have to supply something else. So I make sure it is correct.
So are you going to be doing flu shots again?
Yes, we will. The Department of Health through the state asked us to do all our flu shots in October. So the whole state of Arkansas is going to have all their flu shots taken care of during the month of October. So that ought to be interesting. They better have all their forms ready and all the vaccine to us on time, I'm hoping, because we're going to start October 1st in our school district. So one thing I did want to let you know, I'm part of the, the school district safety committee, and we met with the fire department, the police department last fall. And I met with Captain Cobb this spring. We're talking about bleeding control kits and emergency backpacks and what we need to do in cases of emergency in the building. So we're the first school district in the state, and I started training just this past week. I have trained teacher, we had the fire department come in to train with the teachers. I had my nurses trained on Monday. And so we have backpacks like these that are now in all the schools. We have 10 at each high school, four at each middle school, four at each junior high, two at each elementary, and one at each pre-K. Along with my nurse also has a backpack. There'll be three of these that will go to maintenance. I'll have one here in the administration building. So in these, I bought bleeding control kits so that if someone were to bleed, have a, have an injury like in shop class, we have this kit that's available that has a tourniquet in it. So the people are going to be using these, are going to learn how to use this kit. And so I'm going to train the trainer along with four of my nurses on Thursday morning so we can continue to train staff as people come and go and move in different parts of the building. So that we have a pair of gloves. We have gauze to stuff a wound maybe at the neck or an abdomen, how to apply pressure. We have scissors to cut things off if we need to. And I also have extra dressings for a different size, if we need four inch and six inch, and CPR masks. And if anybody goes into shock, we have a special blanket to put over them, too. So this is all part of the training. This is something that the fire department really encouraged us to be proactive instead of waiting for something to happen and think we need to do this. We've always had some sort of emergency kit, but we've been kind of rescaling them or redoing them. And things change over the years. We had pandemic kits a long time ago. Well, those were huge. You know, we could carry them out. So now we've made things a little bit smaller. We've added bottled water, just different things. Like it monitored, they wanted a tarp because they're out in the middle of nowhere to have somewhere to put down for the kids to sit on, different things. So I've tried to accommodate that. Just want to let you know, this is what's happening in our district and what we're doing. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Jerry, okay. Ms. White, you're ready?
Thank you.
Good evening. The first item that I have for you is the out-of-district transfers for this month. You'll see in your packet, there are 11 students that want to come into the Springdale School District. Six of them are from Huntsville, one from Elkins, and four from Fayetteville. And I don't know details on all of them specifically, but I do know that the students from Huntsville, the majority of them are coming either to attend the School of Innovation or because they have a sibling who is going to attend the School of Innovation. So I thought you'd like to hear that information. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, I'd ask that you approve these out-of-district transfers.
I was going to say, did you say 11?
Yes. The reason there are 10, only 10 numbers is because in number 10, there are siblings.
Ah.
Grade six and nine. Yeah. They, if they're siblings, they come on the same form, so...
So that's, you have 789 now, instead of 800 that are out in the Springdale School District. Just gained 11. Good man.
Keep up the gains.
That's, that's not empirical work. That's great.
I make a motion that we accept the out-of-district transfers as presented.
All right. We have a, a motion by Mrs. Cook and a second by Mr. Williams to accept the transfers as presented. Any further discussions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. And the second item is just an update on the annual school election that is coming up on September 19th. Last month, you approved a resolution to conduct that election by early voting, absentee ballots only. The one thing I would remind you all is we need at least one person to vote in that election for it to be valid. And we'll, we'll see each other again before the election. After that, as we've talked about before, we're expecting the School Boards Association to begin to put out guidance and help us navigate the next school election, which will be held at either the November election date in 2018 or the May preferential primary date, which is May 22nd.
Of '18?
Of '18, yes. So they've, they've communicated before. They didn't want to start that now so that people would not be confused with this election that was happening on the normal schedule. So I'll continue to update you on that.
My question was, something I was reading by one of the counties was saying that we had to alert them of what we were doing by February, January, and February. So since there's two spots that are running for the '18 year, I mean, when, when do we need to, we know yet when we have to decide as a, as a board which of those two we're going to? And do we all still let them know in February or when? I know that's a...
I expect that the guidance will be for a resolution to be passed no later than January. I don't know if they'll back that up at all, but I expect, you know, November, December, January, some point, we would bring that to you and ask discussion and a decision to be made. So there could be a resolution to communicate.
And it can change every year, correct?
It could, yes.
So just because one year we decided one thing, that's something that everybody has to go with.
Right. And that will likely fold into, you know, the election timeline that's published. I, I believe they'll just put a, a first date, a board decides when they're going to, to have their election and passes a resolution and notifies the county.
If we do it in May, would the new person start in June? And then if we did in November, they'd start in December?
That is my understanding, which is a little odd when you start thinking about terms and that it couldn't change every election. But it's my understanding that the, the timeline for taking office, it did, the timeline for taking office did not change in the law. So it, it's a natural conclusion that it would just follow either in... So it's a natural conclusion that it would just follow either soon after May or soon after the November election.
You guys didn't figure out what changed?
That's just...
It's new and it...
It just is a lot that has to be decided a lot quicker than you all as well.
Right.
So we would, like, everything that we normally have to do before you decide to run has to be done so much...
Yeah, several months in advance. I know. Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? I know there's a lot of uncertainty about it, but we'll navigate it and keep you updated as best we can.
You would expect that would be a focal point of a state meeting in December, for sure.
I would think so. And I imagine we'll have some guidance even before that. And we can communicate with the School Boards Association when, what their timeline is on getting that out to us.
Would you guess that we want to avoid the November general? It just seems historically that's the point to avoid is, I won't say avoid, that's not a good word, but you get folks that aren't up to speed on the issues.
Right. I guess it depends on who you talk to about when the ideal time for an election is. And that would be the discussion that you all have when you consider the resolution. The idea is that in the November election, there's higher voter turnout. Of course, with the traditional structure of a school election, it's more in theory is that there's more informed voters to the subject matter of the school election. So that's something that you all can think about. I can certainly tell you either school of thought, but that's something that you'll think about and decide when you pass that resolution. Okay. Is there anything else? Thank you.
Dr. Rollins, I have my two standing items for you this evening. The first is the building projects update. As you can see, I have not added the media centers on here yet because we haven't had a payout on that yet. And in fact, the numbers you have before you are the exact same numbers as last month. So we did not have any requests for payments during the month of July. There are no questions on that. The next item I have for you are the monthly financials for the month of July. Because you have not acted on a budget for the 1718 school year, because I haven't presented one to you, the numbers that are listed here are the numbers from the 1617 school year. During the month of July, our receipts are typically low, as you can see. And then on the expenditure side, our payroll is also rather low because it's just for those folks that are on 12-month contracts that are paid during the month of July. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Kelly, there was a large expenditure to Market Restaurant. Is that a supply company?
That, yes, that is food service equipment. We routinely buy food service equipment from that company.
And then another pre-statement, Ready Reader, for like $20,000, $19,000, 482.
Okay. I'll have to look up that one. I don't recall that one. Did you happen to have a check number?
I do. $29,220.
You know Jim Breckler, didn't you? He always phoned us one or two.
Oh, is that still as an equation in school?
I think so.
Restraite? Oh, that's right. Yes, that's what that was. Yes. No, thank you.
So I was answering the room, didn't I?
Texting us.
All right. Any other questions about the report?
I believe the acceptance of the monthly financial was stated by...
Okay. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Olmey, a second by, was that you, Michelle? By Mrs. Cook. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. There you go.
Brenda, would you come up and join me, please?
He likes to put people on the spot if you hadn't figured that out.
Did you... I was reporting earlier. Do you understand, like, is your family relocated? We are. We are going to do what we're... Our family, they're all there, so we just want to be closer to your parents. We want to make it happen.